For the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you.
Kathleen.
Thank God for America.
You roll call.
McCambo?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Davidson?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
Tonight on the agenda, we have the consent agenda. All matters listed under item one consent agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual finances and miscellaneous minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer liquor, wine and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have seven resolutions. The first resolution amending sewer user fees effective July 1st, 2017. The second is a resolution amending storm water utility system fees pursuant to chapter 100.02 of the Burlington City Code. The third is a resolution amending solid waste fees effective July 1, 2017. The fourth is a resolution amending septic haulers fees effective July 1, 2017. The fifth is a resolution approving submittal of Title VI program for the Burlington Urban Service Transit System. The sixth is a resolution authorizing entering into an agreement with the Iowa Department of Agriculture and Land Stewardship related to a water quality initiative grant awarded for the construction of a green alley in downtown Burlington. The seventh is a resolution approving an amendment of access agreement with Max Convenience Stores, LLC for granting access to the subject premises for the purpose of locating a remediation station and conducting environmental investigation and remediation work. We also have some public hearings set for May 1st. First is consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with the Art Guild of Burlington, Inc., for encroachment into city right-of-way adjacent to the property located at 301 Jefferson Street, Burlington, Iowa, will be May 1st, 2017. The second is consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Spruce Street right-of-way located west of South Main Street and a portion of Valley right-of-way located north of Spruce Street and west of South Main Street, Burlington, Iowa, May 1, 2017. The third is consideration of plans and specifications for the 2017 Seal Code Streets Program, May 1, 2017. The fourth is consideration of plans and specifications for the 2017 Burlington River Trail Phase 1, Phase 1 South. The fifth is consideration of a 2017 amendment to urban renewal plan for Burlington Consolidated Urban Renewal Area related to Apollo High School property disposition. That'll be May 15th, 2017. And then the last is consideration of an acquisition and development agreement related to urban renewal project in connection with Apollo High School development, I'm sorry, High School property disposition. That'll be June 5th, 2017. And Mayor Proton, we also have some appointments as well.
The Human Rights Commission has four people that desire to be reappointed and Dishaw, Linda Robinson, Dan Powell, Candy Glick, Economic Development Advisor Committee Joel Siren desires to be reappointed. So recommend those.
All right. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to have any of these items from the consent removed?
I guess I'd like to remove 1, 2, and 3. Can we get a motion?
You can ask counsel.
I'm sorry. Counsel, do you guys want to remove anything from consent agenda?
Not aye.
Not me, thank you.
We have a motion to approve all this under item one consent agenda with the exception of resolutions 1, 2, and 3 under consent.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Okay. This is time set for hearing for consideration of a transit grant application. Publication has been made in the Hawkeye as prescribed. Mr. McGregor.
Good evening. This application is for our annual FTA and STA funding through the DOT. This year, based on ridership and revenue miles, the STA funding from the state DOT is $229,590. The FTA is projected at $401,759. And then we have four buses on the transit improvement plan of which include two medium duties and two light duties. For the current fiscal year budget, we have two medium duties. The reason why we have the extra two buses on there should we receive additional funding from the DOT. It's in our best favor to move forward with that. We have the funding available. The medium duty buses cost $182,550, of which the DOT pays for 85 percent, so we would be obligated for the rest of the 15. And then the light duties cost about $99,000, of which, again, the DOT covers 85 percent.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. Any questions from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
No.
Not aye.
Good.
I have a motion to the hearing regarding consideration of transit grant application be closed.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
I have a resolution approving transit grant application.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
All right. All right, this is time set for hearing for consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with Martha Wolf for encroachment into Washington Street right-of-way at 313 Washington Street, Burlington, Iowa. Publication has been made. Mr. Tissler.
This is an encroachment, again, at 313 Washington Street into Washington Street right-of-way located east of South 4th Street off the alley there, looking to construct a deck structure for exit out of the front doors of the building onto Washington Street. Site plan here, the doors off the building on Washington Street that currently have a large drop to the sidewalk would like a deck to be able to open those doors and access outside of the doorway. There is a light pole about seven feet, three inches away from the building, so this would leave approximately 55 inches remaining from the light pole to the edge of the deck. ADA does typically require a five-foot separation, but allows to go down to four-foot around small structures such as this light pole, so it does meet the ADA requirements and would allow access out of the structure there onto a platform. As you can see, the doors are a couple of feet above the sidewalk there with no existing stairway or deckway, so this would just be a deck off of the doors without a stairway, with no stairway going down to the step, or down to the sidewalk.
Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
None for me.
None for me. Your Honor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Your Honor, I move authorizing a permanent encroachment agreement with Martha Wolf for encroachment into Washington Street right-of-way at 313 Washington Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's take the vote.
McCambo?
Yes.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
All right, good deal. Next, we have consideration of plans and specifications for the 2017 flood mitigation phase five. Publication has been made in the Hawkeye as prescribed by law. Mr. Tissler?
Leo here to present on this.
Leo?
Yep.
How you doing, Leo?
Pretty good. Leo Foley with Veen Street and Kim. This is a project we talked about last week. It was, we, it's a flood protection project for the downtown. It'll basically be the first of about four, five, four phases. It's paid for essentially by, do you want me to go through this again? Do you want?
For the public's benefit.
Certainly.
That's all right with you, counsel?
Sure. Phase five, what this slide is showing is primarily what the area looks like now and then what the proposed area would look like. Again, this is just in existing conditions. This is just showing you what phase five will look like from what the foundation in the blue area, how much, and then what the minimum area of excavation will be. The next slide shows you in orange what the actual demolition will be, and in the yellow is contractor areas that will be needed. That whole area will be fenced off. This is what after phase five is complete and the flood wall is up, more or less this is what the restoration will look like. Plans and specs are completed, council, excuse me, received bids on May 10th, and if we get favorable bids, we come back to council on May 15th. Notice to proceed June 30th after the steamboat days and then substantial completion before steamboat days the following year. The cost estimate is about $6.5 million at this point, plus a contingency of 10 percent to keep in, so we have it about $7.2 million there.
Last week, you mentioned how many pilings they had to put in.
Yes.
Can you say that, tell us that again?
Yes, the pilings, they're putting two rows every seven feet, and the pilings go 50 feet deep.
50 feet, you say, yeah.
50 feet deep, the whole length. And that, and then there's a concrete foundation that's about five-foot in fact thickness that sits on top of those pilings. And then the wall sits on there, and the whole intent is when you get a huge flood, which this, this wall, the concrete wall, will be at about the 100-year level, and then we'll have removable wall that can go up another four to five feet. And when you get water completely on that hot top is to make sure it's not going to turn on you. Your river wall is more or less to keep the earth from pushing into the river. This wall is to keep the water from coming in on you. This is what that wall will look like. So we're showing the concrete, so it'll be aesthetic in nature, and then the, again, the top of that wall is approximately the 100-year level. So this comes on when you get a 100-year flood prediction is when they would come and put those, put those on. A lot of the time floods, you had this year, floods you've had in the last couple of years, the wall itself should protect you. There will be openings for visual and other things that will have to be closed. This just shows some of that. There'll be a railing on any of those openings will have a railing. Like I showed you last week, that railing will be a lighted railing. This is what the, the texture of the concrete will be in the, in that area. It'll be a generally a local concrete, and it'll be sandblasted, and then there'll be red block in the walking pathways. This just shows the future, future potential for the area. This shows all the different lighting. What we've done is tried to tie the lighting into what's going on in town now and then to make sure all the future fits. So we looked at all of the different lighting. And then on this particular project, as you can see there, there's the wall, there's one of the openings that you'll have, and you'll have a, have a, like a, like just a railing there, certain types of lighting. The lighting has a lot of different directional type of things. And this, again, is showing you the whole park once we get done, what the master plan would look like, so it's all fits together. This is just what you're going to see on phase five. Some of the directional lighting. This is the railing I was talking about and the lighted railing. Those lighted railings, the one up near the port building, will be a swing so that when the bigger boats come in and they put their gangways down, you can swing the gate open and the lighting will swing open. So we had some tricky designs to make sure it'll all work right. This is what the port building currently looks like with the walkway going out, this, this one, and that is going to be demolished back to here for the eventual look that it comes to something like this. So this is just the, what we call phase five, but it's the first phase of the flood mitigation.
Last week, when you talked about that, that's exactly what you said was the port building?
Yes.
It was reported in the newspapers, the depot, a portion of the depot would be removed. I just wanted to make sure people realize and understand it's not the depot.
It's the port building. The depot, the depot was not in these, this phase at all.
Right.
And that, and that shows you what the port building will look like when it's completed. Not the depot. And this is just showing you that at the current time, the city temporary pumps, they will have to continue to temporary pump until we get the pump stations. We had one in the next phase and one in a future, future phase. Again, we're trying to make sure that you don't have to pump any more than you pump right now as far as timing goes, so we're making sure the drainage and all of that type of stuff. The city, if the city gets a 100-year flood, there'd be significant pumping. And what we had to look at for the DNR is if there's a 100-year flood on the Mississippi River and then you get a big rainfall right on the riverfront, how would you handle that? So we're in that process of showing them a, I think I actually made some changes this week to show that we wouldn't have to pump as much as they thought we would, because I think we can raise up some of the drains so that they don't back up as fast. And the city already has a plan where they ring, you've probably seen it during big floods. And so what we're trying to do is make the, it's a catch-22. You don't want the drains too low that the water comes out, but you got to catch the drainage. So we're, we've got that taken care of now. So that's really, in a nutshell, where we're going. The next phase, we're hoping to do some pump stations that are in this type of range in here, maybe some open-top type pump stations that we could save some money and look at, look at getting some future to get the budget back to where the flood mitigation funds pay for, pay for the entire project. I think that's all. That's all I had, unless anybody has any questions?
Start with the audience. Anybody in the audience has any questions or comments?
You could count on it. Leon Chehan, 1821 Malpusson Street. These things just keep coming back, keep coming back. First of all, the most critical infrastructure that you have on the riverfront is a water plant on the north side of town and a wastewater treatment plant by the railroad bridge. Me as a taxpayer, that's the most critical thing that needs protected first. Second point, if you go into the comprehensive plans of old, and I don't know what the most current one is, I didn't have time to do it today, but it's amazing the correlation where we're doing the first flood mitigation is right in front of where you plan to build a hotel and convention center. If that hotel convention center was really so critical, it would have been built by now. And that's what this project is about. I don't want it, I don't want to pay for it. Last problem that I see is when you talk about the 100-year flood stage. You have to understand, we're not talking about a flood that potentially happens 100 years from now. Depending on the rainfall, and we've already had quite a bit, it could happen two weeks from now. And there's no guarantee, that's just a number that's calculated based on the latest data. You're not really looking at a worst-case scenario, and I don't think this flood wall would protect you against it. There's a number of things that could happen. First of all, Mr. Fleming, you've been around for this. A cold hard winter like 1936.
You think I was around?
Wow, wow.
Yeah.
I was going to pick up my gamble for that.
Play the border. A very heavy snowpack, solidly frozen ground, rapid warm-up with tornadic storms over a widespread area and an ice jam against the railroad bridge, this flood wall isn't going to hold that water back. It's not going to happen.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the audience? Counsel?
Jim, how is this being paid for?
This is, as I was mentioning in the presentation, he's, we're doing this out of sales tax funding. This is from the state. The state allocated $50 million annually over a period of 20 years towards flood mitigation improvements. We qualified for $26 million of funds out of that over a period of 20 years. They gradually ramp up. I think this year, we're supposed to get $460,000. It'll incrementally get larger over time, but it'll be large enough, significant enough to make the debt repayments that will, that will be necessary to do this project.
Is that increment local or is it statewide?
That's, those are state, that's the state portion of sales tax that does, that's not part of the local option sales tax. So the state took out of the increased collections that they have from the base year and allocation of their, their funding to, to give to cities, to allocate toward cities for these projects.
So it's, it's a statewide tax collection, just not the, not our local community?
Correct. But it's based on their collection within our county, but it's the state's portion.
So it's just within our county?
Yes.
It's not statewide funding?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions, counsel?
No.
In that case, honor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Your Honor, I move to approve plans and specs for the 2017 flood mitigation phase five.
You got a second?
Second.
Thank you. Kathleen, let's vote her down.
McCambo?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Full steam ahead.
Mr. Fleming?
Statement, yes, statement. Number four. Want me to read it?
Yeah. Statement, consideration of plans and specifications for the 2017 Depot Storm Sewer Improvements.
Second.
Second.
Oh, wait. Wait, wait, wait.
What are you doing?
I was ready, I was moving to the ordinance, I was wondering what he said. Do you want to read it? Or Bob Fleming, go ahead. I'm on the wrong one.
The plans inspected for you are for the storm sewer at the depot. As you can see overhead, this is what the, the detail of the storm sewer system would entail. It allows for future connections from Amtrak's canopies, but also allows for us to tie pumping system from underneath of the building into the storm sewer. We have, currently, when it rains, there is some significant backup in the parking areas as it sits lower than Main Street. And currently, for instance, the basement has several feet of water in it, so it'll be nice to have the ability to pump out from underneath there into the storm sewer. So I didn't do these plans, but the projected costs were at 300, I shouldn't say I didn't, but my staff did not do the original plans. Bolton and Mink did the plans for us, where their estimated project was at $368,000 after reanalysis. By our city engineer, he thinks it'll, it should come in a little lower than that. It was kind of in the time period where I didn't have a city engineer, so we hired it out and took a little time to reanalyze it and get things figured out, so. I can answer most questions. Where, you know, we plan to, after this, go out to bid, receive bids back on the 16th, award on the 7th, notice to proceed on the 19th. The one thing I will say that isn't really necessarily this project, but has kind of an overlapping area of interest is the sewer lateral for the white boxing project at Greers that will likely be coming across back to attach to the lateral. So I don't know the way that plan fits in with this construction project. It may turn into a change order of this project that's paid for separately out of the white boxing. I don't have that answer for you yet, but as of right now, on its face, this plan is projected at $368,000.
And when would we do this?
We would go out to bid shortly here and then receive bids back. It'll probably be a midsummer project.
Midsummer project, okay. After steamboat days again, right?
Not that I know of.
Yeah, construction is after June 19.
No, not June 19, steamboat days.
That's the soonest.
Is that after?
That's right about the beginning of it.
Right at the beginning? We can delay it a couple of days. It's all, it's all on our schedule. It's no grant funded or anything, so.
Just, I noticed that they demolished that building to the south. Does that have any impact on?
It does not have any impact on us. Yeah, BNSF did demolish those two brick structures that were directly south of the depot property.
Questions or comments from the audience? I see none. Counsel, you guys satisfied?
Sure.
Have a motion to close.
Second.
Thank you. Kathleen.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Your Honor, a resolution approving plans and specifications for the 2017 Depot Storm Sewer Improvements.
Second. Moved in second. Kathleen.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the Deer Point Estates urban renewal area pursuant to section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa. Second.
Your Honor, a point of order. Is this the same ordinance that we voted down two weeks ago?
Yes, it is.
I don't think the ordinance is properly introduced then. That'd be brought back as a motion to reconsider.
Can only do a motion to reconsider at, what's the rules on that?
Well, I believe our attorney, Patrick, said that it could only be done at the council meeting, but attorney Jost, Justin out of Des Moines said we could just reintroduce the ordinance tonight.
I don't think by.
We would just start over.
I don't, I don't think by our code that that's correct. I can't, I can't cite it, I didn't have time to look it up today, but I think that once, once an ordinance is introduced and voted down, then it's, it can't be reintroduced for another year.
We recently did the same thing, another ordinance. I can't remember exactly what it was. Might have been the budget, actually.
Yeah, it was different.
That was a different thing.
You did a motion, there you did a motion to reconsider at the same meeting.
There was another one, no, there was another one. Because there was, it was a two-to-two vote on something.
But I thought we addressed that right at that meeting.
No, that was something else. It was something else. In my mind, I can't think what it was.
But again, tell us, our city attorney has told us what?
We asked Justin how to, what needed to be done, and this was.
He said we could just start over.
He suggested Rob to, to address it.
So are we good moving forward then, or?
If that's what the legal counsel said.
Yes, we should go on.
We have a motion on the floor.
That's about all I can say on this. That's all I can say on this.
So can we move forward on this motion then? It's already been presented. Did we get a, did we get a second on that motion?
Uh huh.
Are you looking up something, or?
Well, it's kind of hard to look something up, a question at a meeting, but.
Yeah, you're pretty good at that.
Can we move forward on this?
Yes.
I think we should go forward. This is the first reading, anyway.
Okay.
I'm a patient person.
Well, since you're at the microphone, would you like to give us your information?
Good evening, guys. My name's Ryan Nagarak with Midwest Realty Group.
My name's Ryan Nagarakie with Midwest Realty Group. Been here before and, so I appreciate your time and consideration again on reconsidering my, my request on my TIF, a request for my subdivision. And I understand the concerns that were brought forth there before, several weeks ago at the council meeting. But I do feel that my proposal benefits all of Burlington. There's about five different benefits, in my opinion, and I'm going to go over those and a couple of other things and I'll open it up for questions. But, you know, the first benefit to the city of Burlington directly is South 14th Street was going to be extended. The cost of that, and then out to Summer Street, the cost of that road, and then the water line that has to be extended from Kestner Street down to Summer to service my subdivision also would be a city benefit to extend that infrastructure. The cost of that is approximately $150,000 that I'm going to bear that cost upfront. It benefits the city long-term. A second benefit to the city of Burlington is to the citizens, actually, of Burlington. Per that housing study that you guys supported last, last spring, that housing study showed that 77% of home buyers in this town cannot afford anything over the price point of $260,000. And it also showed a high demand for housing in the 180 to 260 price point. And the cost of development of land is cost prohibitive to do what I'm trying to do, so that's why I'm here. The third benefit is, within my, my proposal, it benefits low to moderate income families in Burlington, and it benefits them by approximately half a million dollars through my, my proposal. And it would go into the North Hill maybe neighborhood, or the Saunderson Heights neighborhood, into these neighborhoods, and we can match it with, with grant funding or whatever from the city and help these homeowners put new windows, new roofs, paint their house. You know, you, you make that investment in those neighborhoods, the tax assessments go up, their property taxes go up as well in those neighborhoods. It, it benefits the city as well. The fourth benefit, and I've mentioned this before, is that, you know, the students of Burlington and our future workforce in Burlington here really do benefit. I've got a partnership, you know, with the Burlington School District, West Burlington and the college, where I was going to donate four lots and the materials, one at a time, to have the students and their faculty come out and build those houses. And then in the end, the profit that was generated out of those houses, once I sold them, I was going to donate half that money back. And then the trades program can use that to grow on. I think, you know, how do you value the education in, in creating the betterment of all of Burlington again? And then, yes, I do, I do benefit, yes, I will not say I don't, but it benefits me to get that cost of development down, to be able to provide housing where there's a shown need in that housing study. You know, and a couple of other things I just want to hit. Back in 2002, somewhere in that range, the current owners of this land actually were before you guys. That was 15 years ago, and they were before the council to, to do a project just like this. And it didn't work out then. And look 15 years later, you know, that ground, it's still a farm field. And so, that, that, we've got to think longer term on a lot of these projects and whatnot. You know, other communities in our area are using this exact same program for, for workforce type housing, and it's working. It's working very well in Fort Madison, Mount Pleasant, and Minneapolis. So, you know, I, I was sharing this with a gentleman here about a week ago, that my wife and I have worked very hard over the past seven, eight years to flip houses, to, to build up the, the ability to do a project like this. I'm just, I'm not a millionaire, I'm not a billionaire. I'm just working hard and trying to do something better for the, the community as a whole, so. But like I've said before too, I really enjoyed working with all the staff for the city of Burlington. They've been great to work with, very flexible and, and understanding and getting questions answered up front. And if somebody had a concern, we investigated that and made, made sure that it was taken care of. And I hope I have your guys' support again on this, and if not, then I do back to the drawing board and we'll see what happens, but I appreciate your time, and if you guys have any questions, I'd, I'd be more than happy to answer.
I think I'm going to start with the, with the audience tonight. Is there anybody that has any comments or questions from the audience on this project? We'll start with you, Mr. Sheehan. Go ahead, Mr. Paul.
Patrick Cohen, I live at 408 Iowa Street here in Burlington, and I'm here this evening as the superintendent of schools. 20 years ago, Burlington quit with building trades. If we had made a house each one of those years and sold it, that would be $3 million worth of taxable property into our, into our community. And we are property poor. The school's trying to step up and do our part to reduce that property poor status, unlike other superintendents in the state of Iowa who just bellyache about it. We're actually trying to do something. We brought building trades back. All the prerequisite courses have been offered and they filled up. We had to hire an additional teacher. There was a huge interest with the children that live here in Burlington, Iowa. They want to learn to build. They want to learn to fix, and they want to learn the trades. Very exciting. Of every 10 kids we send away to a two-year university, or correction, a four-year university and they get their bachelor's degree, 20% come back. Only 20% of the people in Burlington have, have a job that requires a bachelor's degree. We've got to have play, trades so that we can have the fundamental tenets of self-discipline, which is show up on time, be respectful, and do your work. And building trades is going to help us do that. Now, what Ryan has done, he's came to us, over this time, we can now build these houses. We get half of the profit, we'd be able to bankroll our own homes at no cost to the citizens. I can do this without raising taxes. Plus, the children that stay here now can buy their first home, sweat equity, hopefully raise their family here, attend our schools, leave the home better than they found it, and we begin to breathe life into some of the neighborhoods in Burlington. And we have young men and women with the skills to do that. Now, a lot going on. A great, Ryan has done a great job. West Burlington's on board, SCC's on board, Minneapolis wants to send kids down. Burlington would be the regional hub. We get this going, and the other important thing to note is the trade unions have agreed to come out and help us. Now, that's huge, because now we have young men and women that can work in the trades and they have a livable wage. They have the benefits that are necessary to maintain a household where there's health care and those type of things. So, we need to remember our union people also. So, this is a collective effort in Burlington to bring about change, a positive change within our young people and crank out kids that are going to show up on time, they're going to work hard, and they're going to go home, and they're going to be respectful while they do it. And building trades provides an environment in which a kid that might be a little rough around the edges, he or she, might be a little ornery, but they learn to get the job done and done well. That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir.
That's plenty.
Thank you.
Anybody else saw somebody over here in the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me.
Hi, my name is Kim Staub, and I'm a realtor. I work for RE/MAX, and I guess Ryan's project fit a need that I think the chamber ran, did lots of studies, lots of studies about the price range that we're missing, and the price range that we're missing is that 180 to 250 affordable houses. I mean, it's, it's quite evident and it's been there for a long time. The Navajo Sioux and Kestner area, those homes, you realize, are 1990s, so they're getting to be upwards of 30 years old. So, this is a place, his project definitely fit a need. And I understand the concerns that you have regarding not, you know, using the TIF money, but there are other, there have been other builders and they've built other subdivisions out towards the hospital, there's one out by Blackhawk, yes, and they didn't use the TIF money, but if you want to look at the prices of those homes, they're over $300,000 homes. They're not this price range. It's not really apples to apples to compare it or to say, this one didn't get it or that one didn't get it. And that doesn't even make it right anyway. Two wrongs don't make a right. I think what Ryan's trying to do is something that would be very sellable, and I think in the long run, the tax dollars that this community would receive, once those homes were built and sold, you know, would way pay for this project. It's just a good project. It was something that we were looking forward to, and it was something that we were looking forward to being able to show people when they come to town to try to find new construction because there just isn't much affordable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Diane Kroll, and I also am a realtor here in town for 28 years, and I just wanted to confirm that what Kim is saying is definitely right on. We have such a need for properties in the 180 to 260 price range, and it would benefit the community so much if this project were allowed to go forward with the TIF financing. I don't know Ryan, Ryan didn't ask me to be here. I speak just generally because of the need we have here in town and because of the thing that sets this project apart from the rest, is that he is donating the lots for the high school students to be a part of, and I think that makes it a, a special project that deserves your reconsideration.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience?
Leon Sheahan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. It's amazing how these things just keep coming back, keep coming back, keep coming back. As I said in the last time we had a go at this, I refer to it as tax excrement financing because homeowners like me get the wrong end of the stick. In my case, this project and others like it cost me $300 a year. I'm not sure what the average home price is in Burlington, but it's probably about double what mine is, so that means the average homeowner in this community is paying $600 a year for projects like this and others. I pay for my street, I pay for the snow removal, I pay for fire protection, I pay for police protection. That should go likewise for a new property. Now, we hear in addition that, well, this fills a niche. This is $11 an hour town. That's top rate. You're not going to be able to get a mortgage for one of these places. It's just not going to happen. So, once again, you have older residents on social security, fixed incomes, funding houses for those that have a lot more. That's just morally wrong.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Keith Terrell, 127 Greenwood Drive, Burlington. Basically, my opinion is about the same as the last one. I live on fixed income. I've been paying taxes for 20 years in Burlington. My taxes and water bills keep going up, but I keep shelling out money for private. I keep shelling out my money to subsidize, my tax money to subsidize private businesses. We just got stuck 800 million for that fertilizer plant down in Weaver, and I don't want to start subsidizing private real estate in Burlington, Iowa. I want my money to go towards, I want my tax money to continue to go towards basic infrastructure and essential services. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else from the audience? Counsel?
No.
I've got only one other thing, I think, other than what I've set along to add, your honor. I received an email from Mike Pearson today, and it was in relation to a review of the housing study that was done, and in a nutshell, it says that the study did not take into consideration the reduction in construction jobs that were lost due to the completion of the fertilizer plant in Weaver. That the, that it was, that the study was done during the peak of that employment down there, and that they, they were concerned with the results of the study that the chamber had done. This, it was a company called Real Estate Counselors International, and it was a request by Mike Pearson as part of the study that he was, had done for commercial, for his commercial real estate properties. It's, it just gives one other thing to consider when, considering that that's been a highly touted reason for supporting this project. And I just continue to say I've got an issue with using TIF financing for, because we don't have a policy, it puts some people at an unfair advantage, and that TIF financing does take away from the other entities such as school systems, the community college and the, and the Burlington school system, and it takes away from our general fund collections as well. I know it wouldn't be there if they, if the development didn't occur, so I also know that as well. It's a, it's a risk.
I'm ready to vote.
Comments? You good? Okay. Anything else? Let's, let's roll it on again.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Remember, that's the first reading.
That is the first reading. There'll be two more of those.
Here I have a resolution approving the mayor's participation in Fireball Run and authorizing expenditure funds to participate.
Give me a second.
Second.
Does anybody, you guys...
Do you have Jason Hutchison here if you wanted to start doing the review of what the proposal is?
Good evening, Jason Hutchison with the Greater Burlington Partnership, back again from last week with me tonight, as well as Chelsea Toll, the director of our Commission and Visitors Bureau. And just as a quick recap, Fireball Run is an adventure travel series that goes across the nation each season, revealing those undiscovered destination, destinations throughout the country to an audience of 9 million viewers, of 5 million domestic, 4 million international. And we're incredibly privileged as a community to get the opportunity to host them in Burlington this fall after quite the process. We were selected as one of the communities to be on the journey this year, and that'll mean a couple of episodes in that series devoted just to our community, showing all that we have to offer. I can't reveal the points of interest because that, that is withheld from the participating teams from that, but if you Google Fireball Run, you'll get a number of things. You'll see things that say Fireball Run looks for missing kids, local team takes part in Fireball Run, organizer still fired up about Fireball Run, car celebrities visit during Fireball Run, residents invited to play a part in it, televised road rally to be filmed. You get my point. Unfortunately, if you Google Fireball Run Burlington, you get city to vote on game show. I know this has been tough for you, and, and the public messaging has been difficult on, on this issue, and it, it breaks my heart to see how this community is, is treating a travel series featuring our community. They want to come to our community and show what we have to visitors, any visitor who wants to come to our community, and, and to their audience of 9 million viewers. And each community, as you know, has a team that participates in the show, and there are costs associated with having a team in the show. And so, the controversial part is, of course, whether or not the city should pay the cost of having Mayor McCambo be on one of the teams. Now, we committed to having a team. We intended to pay, the partnership intended to pay all the costs related with having a team, and we did that before we knew who was going to be on the team or not. It was just a part of having it in, in our community. Now, it turns out the mayor is a perfect fit for, for being on the team, and it was discovered that, well, it may not be exactly proper for us to pay that fee. And it was discovered that, well, it may not be exactly proper for us to pay that fee. Fair enough. Again, I, I don't necessarily agree with that opinion, but fair enough if, if that's the rule of the road. But I want you to know that having a mayor participate in Fireball Run, that's not a new concept. That's not earth-shattering. In fact, just last season, Sherry Capello, who was a mayor from Lebanon Valley, Pennsylvania, was on a team. And she came back and raved about her experience on the team. And being a part of the team allowed her to network with other participants and highlight the community, get firsthand feedback about what they thought. And that season has not yet aired, so we can't see the results of that. And the community has not experienced the benefits of that participation yet. But they rolled into town last September 27th, and it was a huge homecoming, an opportunity for residents to come out and celebrate these 40 teams coming to their community, celebrate all that they have to offer and showcase. And it was a tremendous media event. So I get it, the budget is tight. And for the record, I want everyone here in the room and at home to know it was absolutely our intention as an organization to pay the fees associated with this community's participation. And, but we can't, so here we are. If this needs to be a budget-neutral thing, and I'm kind of getting the sense that you would like this to be budget-neutral, certainly we would agree to a one-time budget reduction to the Convention and Visitors Bureau out of the next fiscal year. We could amend our existing contract, and we would be willing to offset that so that the cost to the Burlington taxpayer is, is zeroed out, so to speak. My hope is that you'll vote tonight one way or another, and we can move on. I know this has been a cloud, but it's important to move on. This will be, this event will be a great thing for our community. Whether the mayor participates or not is up to you. But still, I hope our messaging after tonight is, is good for the community. Thanks.
Thank you, Jason.
Questions or comments? Anybody from the audience? Counsel?
My determination when I've been considering this was to, the only way I'd vote for this is just exactly what Mr. Hutchison said would happen. I will vote for it on his word that that will happen. And it would be budget-neutral. Budget-neutral.
That's kind of what I was thinking about before. I was thinking actually kind of like a refund of money that we have already paid. But, I mean, if that does the same thing, I don't know what...
It'd be probably cleanest if you had an amendment, amendment to the contract for the third year to, you just change the formula for the third year.
Yeah. And that can come up.
And that would accommodate it, and we could bring that forward over the course of the next couple of years.
Yeah, okay. Then, then I will support it with, with that designation.
Is, is that, is that legal?
If you're willing, well, if you're willing to do a consideration of an alteration to next year's funding formula, you're doing it as a separate action. I'm not going to try to get into the, that, you're getting into the weeds when you're getting into a give and take there.
Should we?
It's so ridiculous that the only person in town has the power that he has to disrupt something that's good for this community, like Steve Delaney at the Burlington Hawkeye. It's just absolutely despicable that he does such things. I, I understand he thinks he's the watchdog of this, of this council and this community, and that he's the eyes and ears for everybody else. There isn't a person, one, that said before this that they didn't want the mayor going. But afterwards, my phone has not stopped ringing, my email's not, has not shut down from people saying, "Don't fund this with city tax dollars." And I agree. But if it was paid for by the, by the Chamber of Commerce, they're, they're all for it. And it's, and, and they don't care. They don't care. They, I, I think they truly know that the Chamber of Commerce is not out to get something from the mayor in return for paying for this. It's not an adventure for the mayor, it's a, it's a, an opportunity for Burlington to strut its stuff. And it's just so unfortunate that this person couldn't get on the side of the people of this community instead of trying to stir things up and, and make things so incredibly difficult for everybody concerned. Everybody concerned. Everybody sitting at this table, everybody sitting out here, everybody that's called me, everybody at the chamber. It's ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. Atsome thing is what it is.
Do we need a clarification of whether, to answer Mr. Scott's question before we vote on this?
I think that, I don't think you can have a, a give and take, but you can have a willingness to consider renegotiating. And you're, you don't have a final figure. You have to figure out what your final figure is.
Right, right.
Is that, is that okay? I think that's appropriate to have a discussion that we're, we've given this, that we want to have a talk, a talk about renegotiating what that figure is.
Right.
But I don't understand where that takes us.
Essentially, you're going to try to, I assume, try to get somewhere near, back to where you're, you're paying the same amount, but you're not, your actual dollar amount, you're going to have to renegotiate where that contract amount is. But you're trying to get back fairly close, I assume, is what you're trying to get to.
Exactly.
Well, I'm sure all four are fireball. I think it's a great idea. I think the fact that we can showcase our town, which I'm very proud of, I think is great. And I've already told my friend, the mayor, if for some reason we can't work this out, because I happen to be agreeing too, I don't want to see tax dollars spent on this. The chamber can go ahead and do this without the mayor, which I think is too bad because I think the mayor would be a great representative for our city. But I want to see Fireball move ahead and make Burlington proud, so just show me how to do it, and I'm ready to vote.
Yeah, and again, this is our attorney's opinion. I think he is trying to be as cautious as he can on stuff. Shane wouldn't be the only mayor participating in this series either, as Jason mentioned, one from last series. Mayor in Fort Dodge is planning on being a participant. It's, and in that situation, from my understanding, the chamber's paying the way for, for him to be involved. But, I mean, their, their, their relationship between the two entities is a little different than ours, and they have a different attorney making interpretations of what's kosher, and we live by what we have.
Then I say let's accept the challenge and let the chamber pay for it.
I'm not sure with, I guess, our relationship with maybe the media, that would be safe for us.
If we've been advised by our attorney, then we need to follow his counsel. I don't think we can just throw that out.
All right, how about my challenge I sent to you? I'll, I'll give up my salary for the rest of the year. I'll refuse my salary for the rest of the year. If the rest of the year will give, refuse $100 of your salary for the rest of the year.
But you can't legally do that.
Why not?
You can't legally refuse the salary, but you could donate a like amount back. We have to pay, it's, it's wages earned, but...
Well, then you have to take out, then you have, then I have to pay taxes on money that I'm giving away. That sucks.
And I think, I think the public would feel the same because it's, we're being paid, you know, with tax dollars and they...
Then I'll take it out of my pocket.
Right. So, yeah, I, it's really hard when all you hear from our 20 people who all say no and give their opinions very passionately. I wish I would have heard from some people who think it's a great idea. And if their silence means they agree, but I've said this so many times, I want to hear you say yes as well. I know I welcome anybody who says no, it's not a good idea, and gives me a reason why. But sometimes it's good to have that, that input of positive. And I know we're, we're supposed to be the voice and making the decisions for the people, but clearly, from what it stands, it looks like we're up against a lot of other people that don't agree with us, when in reality, I'm sure there's plenty that do.
But that, that was if they were spending, if we were going to spend tax dollars for this, and that's not my, our plan. I won't agree to it with that.
Right.
In concept, so...
But I guess what I'm wondering, if we put together what's been suggested, is that going to be perceived as just juggling the books?
Yep. It won't make them happy. It won't make the day-sayers happy.
That'll be the headlines on the, on the front page tomorrow.
Okay. Are we ready to, are we ready to vote on this, then?
I believe so.
Kathleen?
McCambell?
Is he?
What's the word I'm looking for? Thank you. Abstention.
Scott?
No.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Okay.
Here I have a resolution approving City of Burlington citizen participation rules of conduct.
Second.
Okay. This has been based out of, well, we had several discussions that have gone on that included content of what people would speak on as well as length of time potentially. The council did not want to have any length of time included in that. Attached to the resolution is an appendix that has, or an attachment that has those rules of procedure essentially about just method of essentially speaking, proper, having proper decorum. Within the, within the resolution, it was in the packet, we did, our city attorney did have a recommended, recommended change to the Section C, the remarks of citizens to be germane, just to add some clarification on the, on the language. He asked to, and this is at your spots, the highlighted language that he looked to have inserted at the very beginning of that section was during, during public hearings or during the discussion of a particular agenda item, citizen comments must be directed to the subject under consideration. His point there is that the point, the section at the end where citizen comments is open to be on any topic, so he just wanted to have a clarification of that part. Within the next section, or within the next sentence, the presiding officer shall rule on germaneness of citizen comments. And then he looked to insert, during the citizen input portion of the meeting, the topic is not limited to the agenda, and citizens may address any matter of concern. Citizens must understand the council, due to the open meetings law, may not deliberate or take action on items not on the posted agenda. Just some clarification from recommended amendment to the language if you were to move forward with this on that section in regards to germaneness.
Is someone designated to amend?
Yeah, so I...
Is that to be interpreted as not being able to respond to the citizens? Or is not?
You're, you're going to have to take your part on how to, your concern on that language and, and deal with it how you will, Tim. But in regards, the question, "May not deliberate or take action," I think that would essentially say you cannot deliberate amongst yourselves. So how, how much you interpret that meaning, that's, that's not clarifying, saying that you cannot speak at all. His interpretation might be that, that you shouldn't be. You may have a different opinion on that. He's not trying to, to say, to, to set a specified rule there outside of saying, "Don't deliberate. Don't go to the point where you're not allowed to. You're not allowed to deliberate on items that aren't on the agenda." Where you've crossed that boundary, that's going to be something, you got to be, just be very careful of what you do.
Well, I mean, we, we talked about this. If somebody came for something and we said, "Well," you would have to talk to Eric Kizlin about that. That's not deliberation, that's just a result.
No, that's not at all.
Pointing in the right direction. So I mean, I can't see...
That's, that's certainly fine, and that's, that's a very, the attorney would have no trouble at all with, with that. Deliberation would be where you get to where you have enough interaction back and forth that you're modifying each other or potentially influencing each other's opinion on a topic that's not on the agenda.
That's understandable.
I'm groovy with the...
So I would like to...
Yeah, yeah. Is there, is there anybody from the audience that has any questions or concerns regarding this matter? Is he none? You guys have been lovely tonight, even Leon. Counsel? He's not looking very happy tonight, though.
I don't, I don't.
I don't have anything else.
This is not a huge deal, it's just a matter of...
I...
Pushing order.
I'd like to motion to amend Number C, or letter C of Exhibit A, of the resolution approving the City of Burlington citizen participation rules of conduct as follows. See remarks of citizens to be germane to read as during public hearings or during the discussion of a particular agenda item, citizen comments must be directed to the subject under consideration. Presiding officer shall rule on the germaneness of citizen comments. During the citizen input portion of the meeting, the topic is not limited to the agenda, and citizens may address any matter of concern. Citizens must understand that the council, due to the open meetings law, may not deliberate or take action on items not posted on the agenda. Citizens making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks shall be barred by the presiding officer from further comment before the city council during that meeting.
Second.
Moved in second. Let's vote on the amendment.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Okay, now let's vote as amended.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, chief.
Here I have a resolution approving Historical Resource Development Program grant application for depot renovation.
So I could, Mr. Cruz, I mean, Mr. McGregor.
This is an addition since the work session. The grant application for the HRDP grant is April 28th. As you can see in your packet, I talked a little bit about a proposed budget. Ultimately, what the money that I have spent for from the city is cash that we are using for the white boxing portion. I guess I could throw this up on the... Do you want to just amend on cash and proposed budget? What I have getting done is the floors, the windows, and the doors. As you can see off to the right, the amount, and in there it says $13,000 for the flooring. Ultimately, those are monies that would be paid for, for the windows and doors in the white boxing part of the former Greer's Restaurant. That money, I'm just showing that that is going to use as a city match for the flooring. Ultimately, the dollar figure is no more than what I had projected in the budget for the windows and the doors. Ultimately, what we would be getting out of it is getting the floors done from the grant. Unfortunately, a lot of the other stuff, utilities and things, cannot be used. Plus, we're reaching close to the threshold of the grant of, they say $100,000, but in all likelihood, if you, you'd have to get $50,000 to get the grant ultimately approved, so it really isn't anything that we could add to it.
When you say floors, you're talking about the floor and the great room that's now looks hazy.
Correct. We have a, we have a dollar figure for the flooring in the great room, and then I just applied that same square footage cost to the flooring inside of Greer's. So it's kind of a transitional, we applied for this grant last year with this building, so it's kind of showing that we're, we're moving from the great room to the north and still incorporating the improvements to the great room, so...
The depot. Let's see, do I have any questions from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
I'm good.
I'm good. It's hot up here.
Kathleen?
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
It was running.
Number four.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving change to assessment repayment terms.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, sir.
You want me to talk on this?
Yeah, you can do some talking tonight.
Based on the discussions that have been held on the assessment, we did talk with the city attorney about appropriateness of what could be considered by the council for modifications to the assessment. His recommendation was that if you wanted, wanted to, your latitude by state statute would fall in the lines of extending the terms. Our base, our base assessments are done on typically ten years with nine percent interest. That's the maximum that you can do by state statute. But you can go, you can lower the, you can extend the, the payment terms to up, up to fifteen years by state statute, and you can also reduce the interest rate down to anywhere from zero to nine percent. The recommendation, if you're trying to provide more flexibility on this assessment, would be to move in those types of directions. The council did speak the la, this last week at the work session that you'd be interested in moving to that, extending the timeframe to the fifteen years the maximum, and reducing the interest rate from the nine percent down to the zero percent. This resolution you have in, in front of you allows, allows you to do that. It will modify the assessment to, to take that, to take that action. Unfortunately, in regards to the request from the property owner, in regards to changing the amount, or eliminating by state statute the way things are set up, and speaking with attorneys, they do not see your flexibility to take action in that realm, on this assessment.
So the, the attorney, again, just to clarify, he's saying the best that we can do is fifteen years and zero percent interest.
Correct, and that's one where our city attorney talked with Bob Jostens as well from Dorsey and Whitney, just as someone who's dealt with more assessments. Assessments have their own particular, when it comes to street assessments, they have their own particular code section, and they have a lot of legal challenges that have occurred over time. And so you, that's where he's, his recommendations are, to make sure that you stay within an area that's been, that's defined.
Do we have any comments from the audience?
Marlon McKee, eleven twenty-one South Twelve Street. My question is, what was that street originally put in for? Has anybody really gone back to look at what that was about?
That street was originally put into, the project that pushed on having that street done was for the construction of the apartment complexes on the southwest intersection there. At the same time that road is on our comp plan to be completed, to be an arterial, a street that goes around and connects up to Mason.
And when is that gonna be done?
That...
Sometime in the future.
Sometime after we're all dead and gone. How much did the apartment owners pay toward this?
Same amount, same amount.
Same amount, what?
Forty-seven thousand, or somewhere in that neighborhood.
Which, which owners?
Would have, I think, actually was Mike Pearson at the time, he was the landowner. He was not the project itself, but he was the landowner that was the other, other party to the assessment schedule.
Because the original people aren't around anymore. They went to Florida for Hurricane, and that's why they had to tear down one of the buildings, because it was so dilapidated. Everybody remember that? I think that Sandy Davis is getting taken to the cleaners on his whole deal. She was assessed a lot of money for nothing, no benefit for her. It purely benefits the apartment complex. They're gonna be building more apartments, is that correct? I heard somewhere that they're gonna be building sixteen more apartments.
Yeah, there was, we approved that last meeting, was it, or?
Sixteen more units, one building.
Yeah. I think they oughta be picking up the tab on this, instead of going after her little old lady. If they got money to do that, and is, who are the three S's? Do you know, remember?
It's Don Cheedy is the owner developer of the property. He had nothing to do with the original, but he bought them out a number of years after the fact.
And I don't think the own, original owners are the ones that paid the assessment. It was Mike Pearson is the property owner prior to that project occurring. The road was part of, I think, part of what they needed to make their project have it, be able to occur, but...
Has Sandy already paid a chunk of this already? Is this just a remainder of what she's paid?
No, this, this was a, when the assessment was done, it was, it went, it was, they were eligible at that point from the county for ag deferment, and they received it. It's been deferred from the time that that, this project originally occurred back in two thousand four until this year.
I just don't think it's fair for her to be, be in tax for something she's getting no benefit from. It benefits the apartments, and if the road goes on through to Mason Road, and I don't know how it would ever do that, but when they did the original drawing, yes, I remember, going over to Lower Augusta Road and then going over to sixty-one, whether it was Mason Road or whatever road it was gonna be. But it benefits her in no way at all. I think something oughta be done against that.
Thank you, sir. Was there any other comments from the audience?
Mike Crowner, Burlington, Iowa. I just, I look at this and I don't follow it that close. I don't know what's going on, but I know when you come down West Burlington Avenue, I don't understand why there's such a jump. Could it have stayed off her property from the beginning? I mean, did she agree to this, go on her property, or? If you notice, there's plenty of land before the bond. It, it could've went straight across, but it appears to me like it maybe jumped over on her property more than anybody else's. That's just my, what I observed from seeing the street put in.
Thank you, Mr. Crowner.
Yeah, I don't know about that, but when the street was originally put on, in the right of way at least, was fifty, fifty percent from each adjoining property owner.
Counsel, you guys have anything else to add?
Well, just, I'm still really disappointed that we can't, didn't do more. I mean, we, we can approve a TIF for eight hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, and we can buy down a shell building in the business park to two to five hundred thousand dollars. We can give a private baseball team seven hundred thousand dollars after the fact, and we can't find any way other than to discount interest and extend the payments for a property owner that gets absolutely no benefits. I mean, they, they didn't, they just didn't get any benefits. They just lost part of their property. They, um, it's, it's sad that we can't be a little fairer with the, with the, I mean, hey, I'm gonna vote against this tonight because, not because I wanna hurt them and make them pay higher interest, it's just because I don't think we've done enough to, um, help them. It just, it'd be so much different if it, they didn't have to pay for the road in front of their house as well, that if every other street in that neighborhood hadn't been paid for with TIF financing. I mean, it's, it's just a matter of where were, they were at in the time and place, and the idiot that's sitting in your chair not realizing what the heck was going on.
I wouldn't say that would make anybody an idiot. Sometimes we're just, we're just not informed. Hindsight's twenty-twenty. This is where we're at, though, guys, and this is, according to the lawyer, this is as good as it gets. Let's...
We got, we've got the power to do, to do more. I don't think anybody's gonna challenge this.
Sorry, uh, Miss Little. Sorry about that, I didn't see ya.
It's Kathy Little, and I don't have anything prepared, so I'll probably ramble. But if, addressing Mr. Crowner, the, if you look at the GIS website, the, there is more land to the east that's on my mother's property, so the road did jump over to the west. And yes, they did pay for the portion of West Avenue, except for the strip that was the agricultural part. So part of that road's been paid for. I don't know, do you have any other questions, or?
I don't.
And I do know that when that piece of property across from them was bought and then sold to the new people, there was enough profit to pay for that road. They've also, the city owns now all the way to the back of the property, and we had been told before that when they go and extend that, we're gonna be charged again to extend the road. And I guess I just wanna say, as a city council, if you would please stop and think before you vote for something, because there's roads all over town that have been paid for out of city funds and not assessed to the people on either side.
Exactly.
And why we were singled out, my parents were singled out, to be charged for that, I don't know. But once you vote, you can see it's, it's gonna affect people. Okay?
Exactly, thank you.
Thanks.
Counsel, if there's nothing else. All right, Kathleen.
Campbell?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Your Honor, I move to approve amending sewer user fees effective July one, twenty seventeen.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second?
Yes.
So these resolutions are just amending the fees, the increase in fees that were approved with the eighteen budget. So the user fees were budgeted to increase three percent to keep up with the rising costs of the sewer separation. The stormwater fees also increased three percent, and then our solid waste fees increased a quarter, is what the resolutions are approving. Any questions?
I think we're good. Any questions from the audience? Mr. Shanahan. But of course, you removed him.
Yes, hi. Leon Shanahan, eighteen twenty-one Mount Pleasant Street. I, I just find it amazing, in the same meeting, we can give away, the total cost of the TIF that you were talking about is one point three million dollars plus or minus, and then you're coming back on citizens like me and raising my water, my sewer, and my trash fees. There's got to be a relationship, and it's just plain wrong. Every time you give away money, my fees go up. Now, you're, you're forcing, my wife's on social security, I don't have a job, got too many gray hairs for anybody to hire me. You're, you're actually running long-term residents out of this community. You've got to get your costs under control. I, I pay my mom's bill for her. That's why I was late getting, getting here today, as I was doing my mother's finances. For water and sewer, she pays combined, twenty bucks a month. Now, how's that compared to what you're charging here? You've got a problem with cost, and somehow, what's going on with this economic development is driving the fees that we're paying for water and sewer. I haven't audited your books. Being an auditor is not my day job, but there's a relationship, and it's really getting to hurt.
I, I will say, thank you, Mr. Shanahan. Everything's related, everything's related also that, but the driver, obviously, on the, on the sewer fees is the sewer separation. I think that's, that's the big layer there. Mr. Crowner, Mike or Mark?
Mike Crowner. I just wanna answer Leon's question. From my understanding, as I have talked to the Burlington Water Company, anybody that's concerned, they are now doing water meters for residential. Is that, that's what I've been offered. I mean, you know, it is a little bit of expense to the homeowner, but if you really feel that, you know, you're, you're being overcharged, the option is there. I just wanted to make it apparent to everybody at home and everybody here to...
I appreciate you saying that.
Everybody here at the meeting tonight.
Thank you, honey.
Thank you, Mr. Crowner. Anybody else from the audience? Counsel?
No.
Let's take it to vote. Kathleen.
Mc Campbell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Your Honor, I move for approval of amending stormwater utility system fees pursuant to chapter one hundred point oh-two of the Burlington City Code.
Second. Moved to second. Who's, who's doing that?
Well, she, Stephanie, when she was up...
Yeah, she talked about all three.
Talked about all three. Is this on solid waste?
No.
No, it's stormwater.
Stormwater, same, but it's the same discussion as what the sewer fees are.
Well, then Leon, you might as well just come on back.
It's a three percent rate increase, and these both go into paying for the, the same mandates on us for the sewer separation work to be done.
I, I intended for all three of these be discussed at once.
Okay.
And the complaint I had was, was the same.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else from the audience that had any comments? Okay, counsel?
No.
Let's take it to vote, Kathleen.
Mc Campbell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Your Honor, I move we approve the amending of the solid waste fees effective July one, twenty seventeen.
Second. Moved to second by all three of ya. Is there anybody from the audience? Thank you. Counsel?
Mc Campbell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Okay. All right, that brings us to the end. This is the time where we will entertain comments from the audience, so if you have something that you need to address, you're welcome to do that at this time. Is there anybody? Man, you got the flower on your, that's, that means you're special when they give you a flower on your coat like that.
Five seventeen South Seventh Street, Burlington. I'm still hurt a lot of things tonight, and I realize you have many decisions to make, and I think we all have decisions some gonna, gonna affect us one way or the other. Some gonna be far, and some gonna be against us, all apart every. But my concern with the, the raising of the taxes and things like that, and everything's going up, and I stood here, I believe, last year, and I mentioned, one of my main concerns was concerning the park, I believe, and I said again that I believe we are neglecting one of the parks, and I'm concerned about, that's why I did the White Park. We've had a meeting a few months ago, is that right, Siri? You shared some information with, with the group, and it looked very positive. We were, we were happy about the plans that you had presented to us, but I, I'm just wondering, where are we tonight with those plans? The June tinct is vastly approaching, third Saturday in June. Are we gonna go down the same old, same old, same old? I've been attending this ever since it started in Burlington, over twenty-some years, and basically, it's been the same. We, I for one, I don't know how many others have complained. I've complained concerning electrical, and at the time, they said, "Well, they couldn't do anything." I said, "Well, we suffered through that." The, the next thing, we suffered through the water fountain, and that was taken care of here recently. And I think some of the electrical problem was taken care of. When you go elsewhere, and other parks, I won't go into naming When you go elsewhere in, uh, other parks, and I won't go into naming them, you know the parks, look like you invest, uh, more money in all these other parks, I don't know is it because, uh, you have to charge a fee or what, but, uh, that's still a part of my tax, just like it's a part of your tax, and, uh, I don't know how many have been down to Gladys White and Deaf White Park. I know the mayor has, but I don't know if anyone else has. And if you wanna comment, you can, if you don't, that's all right. But I'm just saying, you know, that's, that's my concern. Your decision that you make about anything else that took place tonight, uh, you gonna make that decision. I'll leave that alone, because you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna have, people gonna agree, people gonna disagree, either way you go. So this is my concern, uh, tonight. Have you, have you started, uh, any plans, uh, given us a date, maybe that the shelter house would be erected? I did get some of the cost concerning the shelter house. Every year, we go there and put up some kind of little makeshift, uh, tent or something. You have many elderly people. I guarantee if you go anyplace else, and I'm not gonna name any names, it's not like that. So I'm not accusing you, I'm just saying, I'm just making a statement, uh, making a judgment call. It seems as though that, that park is being neglected. Well, there's not too many people, well, maybe there are more people will attend. Uh, I see the fence was removed, and for whatever reason, that's, you know, that's, that's, that's bygone. But we are speaking of right now. Uh, I see other groups come and other things come up, but, but nothing come up concerning this, and we've been talking about this even last year.
This is taken care of.
It's taken care of.
This is already, not a shelter, not a shelter house.
No, that's what I was mentioning.
Yeah, well, that's, that's not gonna, that's not gonna happen. I mean, I'm not saying ever, but that's, that's not gonna happen anytime soon. I thought I, I thought I already explained that.
Eric, can you talk about the timeframe for what you're looking at? And, and actually, for the council's perspective, some of the limit, or difficulties that have come up into timing on this, as you've looked at storm, where the stormwater pipes are under there?
A couple of things on it, some of our costs to do everything that we wanted to do were more than what we had in the budgets. We have applied for a Walmart Foundation grant, uh, we won't hear back from that for another month or so, uh, that could supply us another fifty thousand dollars or so to complete everything, including the shelter, so that wasn't something we talked about before, but that'd just be an open-air shelter like at Perkins or some of those other areas. So, uh, we wanted to try and do everything at once, so we applied for this grant that, uh, doesn't require any match. Some of the issues that we've encountered are, this area's littered with sewers, uh, part of the sewer separation down the road, but trying to redesign around some of those sewers, uh, 'cause, uh, I don't know, if we can pull up the map on here.
So as he's gonna talk about these lines, they don't mean that we can't do something, but we wanna make sure that we don't put a structure up at a spot where we're gonna have to tear it up down the road. So it's, that's just part of, it's delayed him, them being able to, they're still moving forward with it, it's just slowed it down for making sure that we take.
So on the map, where?
When did that even become part of the package?
What's that?
When did that become part of the, I don't even remember that coming up.
Uh, we, it didn't until we started looking at, when they started doing the design work and looking at where they're gonna lay it out, they real, realized where pipes were underneath it.
South Forest Street, where that would've connected through and where the alley connects through, there's sewers running north-south through there, and then there's sanitary sewers running at an angle through the middle of the park, so, uh, trying to redesign our locations around those and see what might be impacted down the road through some of the separation projects, uh, but also wanted to apply for the grant to try and do everything at once, um, so we're waiting to hear on that, and then trying to get some more bids on some of the cost and items there, so it does take time to get all that wrapped up together, but wanted to, uh, do it all at once, uh, it might not, probably won't happen before Juneteenth, it'll probably happen, uh, after we hear back from this grant, which is in, uh, the next couple of months, and then getting all the contractors lined up, it'd probably be, uh, middle, late summer before we get started on it, but, uh, we do still have this in our plans, uh, we are gonna move forward regardless. Uh, if we don't get the grant, it's completing as much as we can with the funds we have.
I, here's, here's what I wanna say, okay, I, I didn't know about that. Last I heard was that wasn't gonna happen for a while, but this I do wanna say, they're working for you. It, it's, it's happening, they've got grant money that they've got coming, they're, they're doing work on Gladys White Park.
I, I'm not doubting, I'm just, I'm just saying, no, I hadn't, hadn't received anything, you know, I hadn't heard anything. In the last meeting we had a few months ago, I didn't, you know, I'm just going by what the information gives.
When, when we met originally, the money we had in place was for the playground, that was the primary, uh,
Right.
amenity that, uh, we'd gotten some initial costs on and bids on, uh, adding the playfield, removing that one basketball court, and then some of the additional amenities were the, um, the shelter and some other things there that we wanted to see what the costs were, and then, uh, it might be down the road, but with this grant and, uh, trying to move some of our funds that, uh, from Dankworth over here, that we'd hopefully be able to get everything done at once.
Okay, well, you know, the best reason I'm here, I, you know, I'm just asking you, you know, in my feelings, what I've seen, and, and I weren't informed of all the rest of it, so that's the reason I'm here tonight. Not only that, but it is in the working, it is in the making, just.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, the next thing is, uh, would the, would the council be willing to put us up a makeshift tent for the Juneteenth? I mean, you know, makeshift tent for the Juneteenth. You know, there are people come there, older people and things like that, and they underneath the shade tree, we try to put up a little something, I'm just saying, that's a, that's a part of the city.
Doc, I'm not, I'm not for that, but I bless you, bless you anyhow.
Well, you think about it, that's June fifteenth now, you know, I mean, third Saturday in June, I mean.
Hey Reverend, the school will get you a cannon.
All right, thank you. That takes care of that.
Senator?
That takes care of that. All right, so, uh, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Appreciate that. As far as, uh, anything else, uh, I did, I did, was thinking, and I said it would be nice, as leaders, if it came down to it, to give some of their salary to help this fireball deal. I thought that would be nice. Lead, lead out, show us as taxpayers, be a leader, you know, we do that in our profession, you know, I thought it'd be nice, maybe if it came to that, just, that's just my idea. Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience, questions or concerns? Mr. Shanahan?
Leon Shanahan, eighteen twenty-one Mount Pleasant Street. I, I guess I'm, I, I'm gonna try and play by the rules here, um, and not rehash what's already been voted on, but I, I had some concern about this TIF coming up, my understanding from the last meeting, that there was gonna be a discussion on policy about some sort of unified procedure for this, that didn't happen. How, how did this get on the agenda?
Those both discussions were going on, um, there was a desire to see, at least from some council members, uh, the ordinance come back for being looked at when it could, and there is also a desire to see a TIF policy discussion be held. That will have to come back to a, a future council, work session for the council to look at.
I would've thought you'd done the, the procedure first and then brought this up, whatever.
It's usually how it works, Leon. Is there anybody else from the audience, questions or concerns? I want to say we appreciate you tonight. Is there anything for Mr. Tisland today?
I do, just, uh, reminder and, uh, flyer up on the screen, we have Earth Day coming, coming up this Saturday, April twenty-second, uh, with registration at the Port of Burlington starting at eight-thirty. Uh, we generally clean up till eleven, and then have a, a free lunch after cleanup from eleven to twelve-thirty. Uh, we do have Earth Day t-shirts, this is, uh, a new design over past years, but encourage people to wear past year's Earth Day t-shirts or purchase a new one, um, uh, for five dollars there, we have door prizes, music, and photo during lunch, but it's a great event to try and help clean up some of the areas in Burlington, and encourage all to try and attend.
Thank you, sir. And it's a good time, uh, and by all. Amy Wilson?
Thank you.
Mr. Scott? Jim Davidson?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Your folder. Jim Franco?
One of the things that, with that cleanup, the school is involved quite a bit on, uh, Friday as well. Eric is, are you, is, are you working to coordinate some of those project with?
Through the Parks Department, we have some parks cleanups and some bench painting and some other activities.
So you're kinda set up to handle a few hundred kids from the school district on Friday?
Yep.
Which is a tremendous thing that the community puts forward and does, um, in court, and it's, it's just a nice cleanup effort that they're doing and trying to build, instill the idea of giving back to the community within our kids. Nick?
I just wanted to let people know, um, the roundabout detour will be in effect, um, as of April twenty-fifth, the Tuesday. Um, we have pre-construction meeting in the morning, their plan is to start putting up signage, um, after that meeting, um, as whether or not they barricade after that, I'm not for sure, but, um, let's plan on at noon on the twenty-fifth, that, uh, the detour will be in effect, we'll put out news releases, um, as well as, uh, contact the different, um, places to disperse that. Um, I don't know if you also noticed, we put a information guide downstairs on the poster board.
Very nice.
Um, so, and we'll update our website and make sure Facebook's ready to go to, so.
Good, good. Hey, I had, I want, oh, are you?
That's all I had, so yeah, go ahead, please.
The only thing I had that I wanted to add was, uh, I wanted to, uh, just do a shout out to the, uh, the chamber, they made a, a video about Burlington, and, uh, it's, uh, everybody's seen this video, it's just a phenomenal video, um, it's got an ugly black guy in it, they could've did better that way, but phenomenal video, and, and here's the thing, they just came out the video a couple of days ago, and I, that's why I wanna give them points, because I had two families that came to Burlington from out of town over the weekend, and they came to check things out because they saw it in the video, uh, and they said they had a blast, they're coming back because they wanted to do some more things, and it was just so much time in a day, and also, which I think is phenomenal, I had a family that's been in this town for twenty-five years, they've been in this town for twenty-five years, and, uh, they had no idea that Burlington had all of these things to offer. After seeing the video, they were inspired to go out and visit and do some things in Burlington, and, um, they had a blast, and they've got, they've got their checklist that they're checking things off, so I just wanna tell people that maybe there's other people out there just like this family, um, that maybe you don't know all that Burlington has to offer, but there is so much more to Burlington, uh, than McDonald's and just the Roosevelt Strip, so, um, uh, look at that video and, and get outside and, and rediscover Burlington. It's a phenomenal town, and, uh, um, I'm sure that we could go around somewhere and you could find another town with other, more things to do, but we really, uh, we do have a better town than what, uh, a lot of people try to say sometimes, I think we just forget, because we live here, you know, nobody ever goes to, uh, Snake Alley, you know, it's always the people with the cameras and out-of-town license plates, but it's awesome, it's phenomenal, and, uh, nobody, nobody walks the, uh, you know, the paths that we have, you know, but it's funny, I won't walk the paths here, but if I go out of town, they've got paths, I'll walk them, so, you know, I just wanna encourage people to, uh, to see what we've got. Burlington does have a lot to offer, it's a fantastic, uh, uh, place to live, um, it is a great place to live, work, and play. I don't care what anybody says, I believe that, that's why I wear this, I just wanna encourage people, again, um, if you've been a resident for a long time, uh, rediscover Burlington, that's all I've got. I guess that's enough, so, can I, can I get a motion?
I move that we adjourn this meeting at this time.
Second?
Would you like that?
Second.
Kathleen, let's vote on it.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel.